Good evening and welcome to all of you who are present with us here. And those who may be watching online, this is our October 19 regular council meeting. And so we'll begin this evening as we usually do. I will ask our mayor, excuse me, our town clerk if she will call the roll at this time.
Certainly, Mayor Marshburn.
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Okay, and it is noted, I'm sure by fellow council members, that Councilmember Elmo Vance has an excused absence this evening. He had a conflict and he's unable to be with us this evening. All right, having said that, if you will at this time, I would ask you, if you can stand, please join us in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with due liberty and justice for all. And to Mr. Vance's absence, I'm pleased to recognize this evening one of our chaplains with the police department, Mr. Louis Long, who has been with us on other occasions. Mr. Long, if you would, come forward and lead us in our invocation at this time. We appreciate the work you do and you're coming here on short notice.
Thank you. Good evening, go on. Join me in prayer as you feel led. Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for this time that folks gather here, discuss business and serve for the good of the community. Pray, Father, that you bless the council members and their families, Lord, where you give them wisdom, where you give them discernment and just guide them throughout this meeting and throughout their term. You also pray for each other, each other folks that are here, making presentations. We pray, Lord, that you give them clarity in their presentation and that ideas and suggestions would be received with an open mind and that through all your name might be glorified. We pray this in Christ's precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend Long. We appreciate your coming and being with us. Okay, the first portion of our meetings always is an opportunity for the public to make petitions and/or comments. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included on this agenda, so interested parties can choose to appear live on the virtual meeting platform. I don't believe we have anybody who's done that. Or provide written comments that will be shared with council. Council is interested in your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject manners brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And Ms. Gibson, I believe you said there were no persons who signed the sign-up sheet. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't believe I see anyone here, but if you are here to make a petition or comment, I would be happy to hear from you at this time. Okay, there being none, council, what is your pleasure? The next item is the adoption of our agenda for the evening.
May I move?
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded by Councilmember Matthews. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, and it's so ordered. Presentations, I'm not aware of any. Anybody, okay, have none, thank you. All right, the consent agenda has three items and I'm sure council members, you've had a chance to look at those and observe those. So if you are ready, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
May I move, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Behringer. If you approve the consent agenda, please vote aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposition, vote no, and there is none. Okay, we'll move right into the first, next part of our meeting, which includes a couple of public hearings. And so at this time, I'm going to recognize our staff member, Mr. David Banford, who's with Planning Services. And Mr. Banford, we will hear from you at this time, sir.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of council. We've got two annexation public hearings before you tonight. The first one is case number ANX 21-11. This is a large industrial site under construction now on Highway 70 East across from Camping World. The annexed area is approximately 35.56 acres in size, and this is a vicinity map of the annexation site. So we, so Camping World is, I guess, to the southwest. So the areas that have already been annexed are in blue, so as development occurs, we are starting to see annexations in this area. The, this is for an approved development. This is, the project name was US 70 Industrial Phase Two and Phase Three. So Phase Two was approved on April the 1st, 2019 for 244,028 square feet of warehouse flex space. And Phase Three was approved on July the 20th, 2021 for 240,000 square feet of industrial warehouse flex space. This development will connect the town water and sewer, and so annexation is a requirement. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this case.
Thanks so much, Mr. Banford. Are there questions from council on this, on this item? Okay, seeing and hearing none, council, I will ask for a motion on this particular item. Well, I should ask if there's any one here who cares to speak on this, and I believe there are. So a motion would be in order at this time.
Mr. Mayor, may I move, we approve ordinance 2021 5071 to extend to corporate limits?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton, and seconded by Mr. Matthews. So, council, if you favor the motion as it is presented to you, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
You mentioned the adjoining town limits, but this is a satellite annexation. Is it not a contiguous annexation?
That is correct. This is a satellite annexation.
For explaining that to me. I'm curious.
Sure, sure, we have the, we have the primary corporate limits.
Yeah.
And then we have the satellite, which, which are areas that are detached from the primary corporate. So we do have those around town. Years ago, there was a state law that limited our satellite to 10% of the primary corporate limits. And then there was a change in state law where that 10% rule went away. So we no longer have a, a size limit on the area of satellite annexation. There are some standards that you will see in the ordinance, certain requirements that have to be met for a satellite annexation, and those have been met. This area is in our planning jurisdiction, it's in our zoning jurisdiction, and it's also in, on the side of our annexation boundary agreement with City of Raleigh. So we don't, staff don't, does not see any issues with this annexation.
Okay, I was under the impression that satellite annexations were not abutting or adjacent to existing town limits and contiguous were. So I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding it properly.
You have satellite, those are satellite parcels that have a new satellite parcel adjoining it, so they're...
Yes, so, so this, this area where Camping World is and Conica, Nolta, this will be a satellite annexed area of Garner. So the, the primary corporate limits would be located west of Rayner Road, Auburn Nightdale Road.
Gotcha.
And that vicinity, North Greenfield Parkway. So this is detached from that area.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, another way to think of it is that there's intervening property that is not annexed yet between the primary corporate limits in this. So anytime there is that situation, it's still considered satellite.
It has to be contiguous with the main town boundary. Thank you.
That was my question. Okay, Mr. Dellinger. Okay, we'll go back to the, to the motion. Let's see, did we already have the motion?
Yes.
I believe we did, yeah. So a vote is in order at this time. So if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And there is no opposition. Thank you, council. Mr. Banford, we'll hear from you on item two.
Okay, this, the next case number is ANX 21-14. The previous case was for new development and new construction. This case is, is for an existing development, Safety Clean. They've been there for many years. And with water and sewer coming to the area with the approval of an industrial business park on Somerville Park Road, they have requested to connect to water. So it's my, my understanding with them that they are not requesting to connect to sewer at this time because it's, it's not close enough, but they are requesting to connect to town water directly across the street to the south on Somerville Park Road. There is a public water line that runs along Somerville Park Road that was extended north from Vandoor Springs Road to serve the commercial development that was approved south of Safety Clean. In addition to the, to the project site, we will also include the right-of-way of Somerville Park Road, and that will fill in that, that gap here. Moving on to the staff report, the annexed area is approximately 3.53 acres in size, and with the addition of 0.97 acres of right-of-way, total annexed area would be about four and a half acres. And again, this is an existing business, probably built in the late 70s and 80s, and they are requesting to connect to public water. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I have one question, Mr. Banford, and I probably shouldn't know the answer, but since water is only available this time, if they desire at a future date to connect with sewer, is that sort of a formality?
So if they are annexed, they, they would be allowed to, to connect to public sewer. They would just pay the TAP fees and the other fees that would be required. So if they are annexed tonight, they would satisfy that requirement to connect sewer at a later time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, council, any questions for Mr. Banford on this item? Okay, hearing none. Before we vote, is there any other discussion that needs to be made? Okay, so a motion is in order on this item?
Mr. Mayor, okay, Mr. Mayor, may I move, we adopt ordinance 2021 55072?
Second.
Properly made and seconded by Mr. Matthews. Now, any last minute questions or comments? Hearing none, I ask for a vote. If you favor this motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And if there's any opposition, no, and it is so ordered and passed. Thank you very much. Mr. Banford, let me see, are we finished with you at this time, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, next item of business is under new and old business, and we will recognize Mr. Beck, our financial director, who I know, by the way, just celebrated a birthday not so long ago. It's down at his office and they were having a celebration down there, so. They gave me a piece of pie, I believe it was. Thank you. We recognize you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, glad to have you there for the little celebration. That was, that was a fun time.
Thank you.
Good evening to everyone. So tonight I'm bringing to you a resolution to allow the town to join and participate in several cooperative purchasing programs that are available. Per our town purchasing policy, council needs to authorize us to participate in those programs. And we brought a list of four well-known established programs that our, our staff are familiar with and are routinely used by other local governments. And we would ask that you would bless our participation in those programs, and there's no cost to the town to join or maintain membership in any of those programs we presented to you. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about those.
Okay, council, questions for Mr. Beck? Anybody on this end? Mr. Singleton?
I've got one, just out of curiosity, and since it's a cooperative agreement for local governments, in reading the bottom, we talk about, come a member of the Sourcewell OMNIA Partners, Houston, Houston Galveston Area Council Purchasing Cooperative and the NC Sheriff's Association. I know Houston and Galveston are located in Texas, so is this a nationwide cooperative?
It is, yeah. So they, Houston, Galveston, I think what a lot of folks use that one for is, is large equipment, so like public works type trucks and things like that, that they, they go out and do the bidding for, and so it's, it's known nationwide and utilized.
All right, thank you.
Hey, anyone else, questions for Mr. Beck? All right, hearing none, then council, I believe we were asked to adopt the resolution that you see before you there, so I'll entertain a motion of that effect.
Mr. Mayor, may we adopt Resolution 2021 2470, a resolution authorizing the joint purchasing cooperatives?
Second.
Okay, motion properly made by Mr. Singleton, and seconded by Mr. Matthews. So any questions or comments before we vote? Hearing none, if you, if you favor and approve this motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
No opposition, vote no, there is none. All right, thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Beck. Keep up the good work. I'll recognize our town engineer at this point in time for the second item under new and old business, Vandoor Springs Sidewalk and a Bid Award. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Bringing this item to you for the Vandoor Springs Road sidewalks bid award. As you know, this project has been in the pipeline for several years. It's one of our last larger scale street projects associated with the 2013 bond. So very brief agenda for you. Quickly go over the project again, talk to you about the bids that were received, touch on the interlocal agreement that we have between the town of Garner and the city of Raleigh, followed by staff's recommendations and next steps. So a brief overview of the project. Project starts at, on the west side, at the Tiffany Woods Eastern Entrance at Tiffany Circle, and will extend to the east over to just short of the Timber Drive intersection. The project will include adding curb and gutter along both sides of the corridor, resurfacing, rebuilding the pavement along the corridor, including the installation of a proposed new water line, as well as adding sidewalk along the south side of Vandoor Springs Road. So a couple hot, or highlights of the project. We'll be widening existing pavement out there, it's probably about 20 feet wide. We're going to be widening so that there are two 15-foot lanes, one lane in each direction. Will we be replacing the existing shoulder swales drainage system that is out there today with a closed underground storm drainage system? Already mentioned to you the sidewalk. And then we'll be replacing a old 12-inch asbestos cement water line. I think it was aged back in around 1973 installed, so upgrading that in conjunction with our interlocal agreement with Raleigh to a 12-inch DIP water line, as well as replacing all the new water surfaces and connecting to that new line. And then from a stormwater standpoint, we're also going to be adding two new 36-inch pipes. These are not in the mainstream. The box culvert that's there today will be simply extended with a new head wall, but we're adding two additional pipes that will set up a little bit higher elevation, basically to help with the larger storm events when the entire floodplain is filling in, provide more capacity for that stream crossing. So moving on to our bid summary, we received four bids, opened them on September 23rd. Kind of had a good spread of bid numbers here. Just a quick note that although NARI contracting was the apparent low bidder, that bid was rejected due to incomplete documentation required with the bid submitted. So the, the low bidder to be recommended by staff is SA Holling and Utilities. They submitted a bid price of $1,491,652. That was 11.2% above the engineer's estimate. Just kind of, we were starting to see more increases in construction pricing sort of across the board, just due to increased costs and the pandemic. We've all, SA Holling had a 10.1% MWE participation, so they met the town's 10% goal. Staff is also recommending, as usual, a 10% budget contingency to, just to cover any unforeseen conditions that we may encounter with the project. But the initial, that would be, bring the total construction budget to $1,640,817 roughly. Just a quick recap, our interlocal agreement with Raleigh, as you may remember, we executed that agreement back in May of 2020. That includes the replacement of the existing 12-inch water line. And the maximum reimbursement with that agreement is about roughly $276,000. Twenty-six thousand roughly of that was to go towards the water line design. Staff recently, just this week, submitted a request to Raleigh Water to get that reimbursement since, since Rami Kepin Associates, our design consultant, has satisfied the water line design portion of that reimbursement agreement. And then the, the balance, roughly $250,000, can be requested following completion of construction. So we will be upgrading, updating the numbers to reflect, this was all based on earlier estimates, will reflect that based on the final quantities and bid prices associated with the water line, line items in the bid contract. So next steps would be to execute a contract, an issue and notice to proceed. The time schedule for this project is 270 days, so we're anticipating a starting date in sometime in early to mid-November, and that will put us completing the project sometime around August of next year. So the recommendation would be consider award of the project award to SA Hollings and Utilities, and authorizing the manager to execute a contract for an initial cost not to exceed $1,491,652, and also approving the 10% budget contingency. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson, sure enough. Glad to see this move forward. It's been out there for a good while, sure enough. Questions by council for Mr. Johnson, are there any? Mr. Singleton, I recognize.
Yes, Chris, construction to start in November, so usually after the award of a, of the contract, 30 to 40 days to mobilize. That's what you're anticipating, mid to late November to start.
We're looking, we, we had a, I believe it was 45 days from the bid opening, so that would, the bid opening was in late September, so we're looking at mid-November.
Okay, there you go. And...
And the work, we just, just to clarify, there will likely be some work that may be seen by residents ahead of that time, and that will be more related to private utility relocations that are going to be starting in advance of the work.
Okay, so the water line replacement may be, may be one of the first things that's done, I'm assuming?
It'll be mostly related to the water... It'll be mostly related to the waterline and the storm crossing. So there'll be, that'll probably be the primary point. There is also going to be a temporary road closure. Two stages of that during the first phase of the project. One will, will, will be a longer stretch of Vandoor Springs that will route people around the project. And then once they get a certain portion of the work done, they're going to limit it to just the, the area, I think of that block between Tiffany Circle and Timber Drive. And then once they get through that first phase, then they'll, it should be the rest of the time under temporary flagging lane closures.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I know that's a heavily traveled road in Rush Hour. So the road will be, well, initially it'll be fully closed. And traffic will have to wear a detour on Buffalo or somewhere back up that way.
Yeah, I believe it goes, I believe it goes north. I don't have the map off the top of my head, but I want to say it goes around to the next, is it Woodland?
Hall Boulevard can take you to Woodland.
Probably Woodland. It goes around Woodland back out to Timber.
Okay, yeah, that'll be messy.
But we're going to try to do our best to limit that road closure as short as we can.
Yeah.
Obviously, that's, weather is, is a problem. You can always have surprises, but
Sure.
That's, that's the part of the contract we're trying to expedite.
Good. Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Johnson? Do you have anything, Phil, down here? Any questions? Okay. All right. So you see the requested action by council. So council, I'll entertain a motion at this time unless there are any questions or comments for other hearing none. Motion is in order.
Mayor, we award the project to SA Hollings and Utilities for the stated amount plus the 10% contingency in staff's report.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton, and seconded by, I'll give Ms. Behring your credit for the second. Hearing no other questions or comments? If there aren't any, council, if you approve this motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And if there's any opposition, no. And there is none. So the motion is carried, so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your time. And
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I believe I am correct in saying we're already down to committee reports. So I'm not aware of any. Council, any committees that you're serving on, any reports from anybody?
A very brief update from Parks and Rec. We had a good meeting yesterday. Formed a committee to look at some language in their town code, revise it to kind of move some of the functions, those functions out of the code and into bylaws. Feel a little more flexibility. So there's very good conversation we had out of that group. Town manager assisted with some of that too. So that was great.
Is that something, I guess it comes back to council with the recommendation?
Yeah, they're going to do a committee, bring it back to that group to look at, and then submit it to council. Again, there are just some kind of broad purviews and other charges that probably are beyond the scope of the Parks and Rec Committee.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, sir, for that report. Any other committee reports from council at this time? Okay, hearing none. Okay, Mr. Manager, we'll be pleased to hear your report, sir.
All right, Mayor, Town Council, you have the Garderan info in your packet and also the building permit report. And you have a financial report there too. And a couple of things to point out is that we're a quarter of the way through the budget season. And as the report notes, we've collected, I think, what is it, 21%? Oh, 13.3% of the estimated revenues. But I mean, no need to, to worry because this is a time of year between now and the beginning of the year that we'll start collecting some of our ad valorem taxes. And you will see, as you look through the list there, that our building permit revenues year-to-date are up 190.5% over the prior year. And we've already collected over half of our budgeted revenues in the first three months of the year. So that's trending very well. The town has spent it, expended approximately 21%, 21% of its budget. So, but like I said, there'll be revenues coming in over the next few months. And Mr. Beck is still here. So if there's any questions about any of this information, we can try to answer those. Sales tax is still trending above projections and doing really well. So I think things are looking good right now. Any questions?
Okay, any questions for the manager? And I know, I start to say sort of in the background, maybe not so much in the background, there, there are staff members that are receiving information from either League of Municipalities and/or other organizations in regards to the federal funds and criteria in terms of those things. So I'm sure we'll have a future report on that.
Yes, guidelines are more final. Still don't have those.
All right.
We are looking at programs and looking at tracking what some other folks are thinking about doing and those type of things.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the manager in regards to these reports?
I have more.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. Exactly.
Thank you.
One question, just on the financials and looking at the month ending compared to last year, are in there significantly higher across what we've collected from last year? Are we expecting once the, you know, ad valorem and the sales tax continue to come into the end of the year to be way higher in terms of what our projections were during budget season?
Yeah, I think they'll continue to probably trend higher. I think one thing to remember when we're comparing to last year too, is we did ratchet down our projections last year due to COVID. So
But even the collection numbers themselves are higher. So it'll be, it'll be interesting. It'll be interesting.
Yeah, we should, should do good on collections. Normally in the 90, last year, I think we're 99 point something percent projections, collections, I mean.
Yes, we're usually in the 99% range for collections. Wake County does a fantastic job with that. We're very fortunate to have them doing that on our behalf. Regarding the collections year-to-date, some of that increase is due to the, the tax increase that took effect.
Okay.
And also just the general growth of the tax base that you experienced. So, you know, it'll, some of that's budgeted and, and usually we're kind of conservative on the budget side with that. And hopefully we'll, you know, outpace what the budgeted numbers are.
Thank you.
All right, I want to give you a report on some of the events that are coming up during this holiday season. First trick-or-treat, the trails is what it was commonly referred to. We are going to do something different this year. We didn't have as many vendors as we typically would have when we had it in White Deer Park. So we are moving that to the Garner Rec Center. We expect to have about 11 vendors that have confirmed. And we also will be joined by the YMCA. They, I guess they're going to take their event and combine it with ours and join us at the rec center and help out with that. It will be set up on the track. So I think it's, it's being called Trick or Treat the Track instead of the Trails. We will have various games like pumpkin tic-tac-toe, other fun activities, decorations, photo ops. We will require masks since it's an indoor event. And like I said, the YMCA will be joining us.
Rodney, what's the date on that?
That is
This Friday with the night market.
Oh, is it? Okay.
22nd?
It's this Friday.
Yeah, yeah, October 22nd, concurrent with the night market, which is five to nine.
And Rodney, some of, some of the activities and vendors will be outdoors as well. It's mostly indoors, but there will be some out.
Okay. Yep, I was just getting down to combination of indoor and outdoor activities. So, yep, thanks, John.
It kicks off at what time?
You know what time that starts? It's not up here.
The night market starts at?
It starts, night market starts at five. So it'll be concurrent with the night market. But, but I'll have to confirm whether that time is the same. Can you check, check on that? Is it?
Time should be there. I'll check if it's not.
All right. Well, it says night market, five to nine. So that's concurrent with that. So the time should be the same. Yep, okay. In November, we will have Veterans Day recognition. That will be November 11th at 10:30 at the Aversboro Baptist Church. The speaker will be Lieutenant Colonel Thomas Smith. Garner Magnet High School will provide an ensemble for the event. And Mayor Marshburn will be the emcee this year for that event. And we're consulting with the church about their mask policy. And we'll have more information about that when we put out some public announcements. And let's see. And then that brings me to our holiday event. So we're having a holiday event on Saturday, December, Saturday, December the 4th, from 3:00 to 5:00. And we're calling that the Garner Holiday Block Party. And that will be a holiday celebration event at the Garner Recreation Center, outdoor in the field and using the outdoor walking trail. We have, we have secured the Garner Express, what we're calling the Garner Express. It'll be a 24-person train ride that will take you on a round trip ride around the field on the walk, that, that walking track, sidewalk, whatever you want to call it outside. We will have local high school bands, holiday crafts. We'll have line dancing, food trucks, and games. So that is our plans for the, the holiday event. And we'll be putting out more information about that over the next few days.
The hours going to be on that?
3:00 to 5:00 PM.
The, the train is off for 24 passengers. And I think the town council knows it's not for us to ride on. I don't think we'll be able to fit. It's going to be going on the trail.
We'll have Santa Claus join the party. So get ready for those family-friendly selfies with old St. Nick.
The other event, in addition to that event, we'll have our annual tree lighting typically held during the Light Up Main. But that will be combined with the Garner Night Market on Friday, November the 26th. We will have our, our annual tree lighting on November 26th at the Night Market.
That's 6:00 PM, Rodney.
And that starts at 6:00 PM. And for those that have been out to the night markets, they have been hugely successful. A lot of variety brings out families for shopping and displays and just fun. And then bringing vendors down to Main Street. So we've been very successful in combining some of our events with, with those. So that's what we look forward to doing there. Any questions?
So the night market, I'm assuming on
26th will be from 5:00 to 9:00. But the tree lighting is going to be at 6:00.
Correct.
Yes, correct.
All right, just to confirm.
Yep. Just a quick update. The staff continues to have conversations with the Garner Grows Group. Did you want me to do an update? Or did you want to do it? Okay, all right. Continue to have conversations with the Garner Grows Garden Group. Had a really good meeting with them out at Thompson Road Park and just talked through some of the plans that they had and some of the logistics as far as the town side. Still in the preliminary stages. We'll have to bring something back. Doing some research on some things and very good conversations. And looks like it could be a workable situation, but still got to look into a few things before we bring it back to you. So.
Yeah, that made a follow-up. It was really, a really good meeting with them out there. There were some, you know, questions about how to get the water over there. But it was, they presented some very preliminary landscape maps that kind of combined space for allowing greenway access or trail access and keeping the garden itself over to the side. So it was really a good meeting. And looking forward to what keeps moving forward. I think that Parks and Rec is going to review. I talked with Ms. Ernestine in November, their sort of concept and site plan things, and just get feedback from that group as well. Planning Commission had referred that in their last meeting to the Parks and Rec Committee. So it was a good meeting.
All right. All right, I'm going to give you an overview. Me and Mr. Hodges are going to give you an overview of the bond resources. Just to kind of let you know what we have out there. Of course, we have some printed material. So we have these brochures. We also have some signs throughout town. The town signs have our garnerbonds.com website. So if you forget what the address is, you can see that on some of the signs. But just wanted to kind of walk you through some of these website and electronic things that we have available that provide information. So like I said, we have garnerbonds.com. And it has the four questions here. And if you were to click on any one of these, it will give you more information about the question. For example, street and sidewalks. You've got an example of a project that we recently completed with the existing bond program that we're in, the 2013 bonds. But this gives you some information about the amount. So this one's 24.05 million. And it has some information about some of the, kind of the plans of what we have for some of these bond dollars. And there's also some videos associated with some of the bonds here. And John's going to walk you through some of those. As I go back to the homepage, there's information about the, the voting, when early voting starts. You can see that here. And there's a schedule there for anyone who wants to see that. Also have a sample ballot, which could be helpful. You could always also go to the elections, Wake County Board of Elections, if you want to see a ballot for your address, something more specific. And then there's voter information. We always have you go to the Elections Board website for any specific questions. But we have our icons here for the different questions, street and sidewalks, parks and recreational, public safety and facilities, and stormwater. Also would like to mention that we have several, if you go to our YouTube page, we have some, some, some video of our bond question presentations that we did here, some of our Facebook Live presentations that we did here in the council chambers. And there's some information there that we share with the public. There's a video talking about our entire bond program. Here, I'm, I'm not going to show that right now, but viewers can go to that website and find that. I think we have showed that in a, in a meeting before. So I won't show that right now. But just a wealth of information out there about the, the bond program, some frequently asked questions. And I'm going to turn it over to John. And he's going to show you some of the resources that we have that will give you some more information about one bond question in particular, and also show you some of the videos that have been produced. And while I'm here, I do want to thank Kyle Kepler, Kettler, in the Communications Department, as well as Rick Mercer. But Kyle has done a great job of producing these videos. When you see these videos, they're, they're really neat and have some features that we probably haven't had before. And he's done a great job of bringing some of his expertise to the town and doing a great job with that.
Thank you. Rick wanted to also mention that there was a mailer that did go out that a lot of folks have already received in town. So that was another way of outreach. We have, we've been receiving some questions as we've been out presenting bond materials out in the community. So we thought tonight would just be a good opportunity to show this overview. As Rodney said, a couple of particular things we want to draw folks' attention to, street and sidewalk bonds. There's one of, of the videos that Kyle did there that, that hopefully everyone's taken a look at. But there's a few links on here that we want to make sure that people knew were here and available. So one of them is details about some of the projects like the Joan Sausage Road project. There, there is a link here that will take you to the engineering project page about this project that gives you some more details. Mr. Johnson rolled out some of these sub-pages to you a few meetings back. But we are linking these to the bond page so that folks have access to them. Another one is under sidewalks. And as we've talked about before, council has not put a, a list of every sidewalk they plan to build because we want to make sure that we can think through some of the strategic alignments of where to build them and also how to get them funded. But there are some that we have identified. Some of them are ongoing now. But some of them are things that we know we'll be doing with the next bond. So if you click on the link on this page, you'll go to our Capitol Street Projects, Street and Sidewalk Projects page. And at the top, you'll see some projects like Lake Drive Widening, Joan Sausage that we've already mentioned, New Rand Road Improvements that's been completed with our, our current bond program. And then the White Oak Road Roundabout that is going to be, intended to be completed with, with that is gonna be, intended to be completed with, with 13 bonds, but some of the costs could carry over into the 2021 bonds. There's also some sidewalks that we've mentioned in some of our bond presentations that council has already authorized, but we knew would fall into the next bond referendum. Some, closing some gaps around town like the Avisboro Road Sidewalk near the YMCA, Brown Road Sidewalk that will help connect Brown Road Elementary side of the road to several new subdivisions that are being built, and Garner Road Sidewalks that will connect a missing gap between our existing neighborhoods in North Garner and newer neighborhoods that are being built further down Garner Road. So we, in addition, you can also get some details about other projects that are not the towns, but we want to make sure that council, as well as their citizens who may be watching, knew that the link was on the bond page to get to our Capitol Projects page so that you could learn more about the projects that we have underway currently, as well as projects that we plan to undertake with the 2013 bonds. Two other things we wanted to show to council and to our citizens watching tonight, on our Parks and Recreational Bonds page, another one of the great videos that Kyle has done has been loaded, so I'll let you watch this.
I don't believe it. She's gotta get away. She's driving it up the middle. There's no one around. Shoots. Go!
Learn how you can play a part in the next Garner Olympians future through the 2021 Parks and Recreational Bonds. Visit garnerbonds.com and make your plan to vote in the November 2nd election.
So that's one of the pieces that's been put out, and then we also have one of Kyle's videos that I don't believe we've shown at a council meeting before that is on stormwater. And as we've mentioned to a lot of people when we're out doing bond presentations, stormwater is one of the topics that probably has the least interest to most people, and probably to, to most people also the hardest to really comprehend what we're talking about and where we're talking about things. So Kyle has gotten very creative with this video.
Garner is home to a number of old established neighborhoods. It's part of what gives the hometown charm to one of the fastest growing parts of the Triangle. But with aging neighborhoods comes aging stormwater infrastructure that hasn't been updated in decades. By the marvel of smart engineering, rainwater drains into pipes under the ground where it's then released into Lake Benson or the News River. Over time, those pipes begin to wear out, causing flooding, sinkholes, and other serious damage to Garner streets. In order to be certain that all of our residential communities and commercial areas can sustain a great quality of life and thriving business environment, the town must make adequate investments in stormwater infrastructure. If approved, the stormwater bonds totaling up to $2.95 billion will be used to upgrade old and aging storm drain infrastructure to ensure proper drainage of town streets, focusing on stream crossings and roadways. An investment in what goes underground makes for a wise investment in what goes above ground. Help shape Garner's future by making your voice heard in the upcoming bond referendum. To learn more about the 2021 Garner Bond Referendum, visit garnerbonds.com.
I must admit, the background music is the coolest part.
So sorry that the full screen view was not available from this page, but you can see the full screen view on our YouTube page, and we'll see if that's something we might can adjust in this feed here. So we wanted to point out these additional tools in the event that council, or especially our voters that may be watching from home had not seen them, make sure you knew they were there, make sure you knew these additional links were there to other places. Public Safety and Facilities also has a great video that, again, the team put together on our, on our public safety team, and I think we've shown this one here before, but that's available for citizens to go and watch as well. We do have a couple of other opportunities for citizens to learn more about our bond program. The Downtown Garner Association's North Garner Community Meeting that they hold semi-regularly will be featuring the bond presentation. That will be this Thursday night at 6:30 PM at the Garner Performing Arts Center. So there's plenty of room to social distance for anyone who may want to come out and see a live presentation, but yet also be able to, to spread out. Then we will also be doing a Facebook Live event, Mr. Dickerson and the mayor and myself on Friday morning at 11:30. We're sort of planning this as a lunch and learn timeframe for people that may not be able to see our live Facebook feeds in the evening. Maybe you can take your lunch break and watch the, the presentation on Friday. And if there's any questions, we'll be happy to, to answer those for you.
Okay, thank you so much, John. Questions at this point, council, anybody? Anything? Down here, Kathy? Okay. All right, well done, and Kyle is probably back there listening, so I would commend him for the good work that he's done on these particular presentations. They're both catchy and hopefully entertaining, I think. Was that it for you, Mr. Manager? I don't want to skip over anything else, okay. All right, well, I will at this time go to a council report, and I'll start with Mr. Singleton on my left.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Just mentioning about the, the mark, downtown market is this week, which is the fourth Friday, which since it's the 22nd, it seems early, but it is the fourth Friday. So I encourage people to go to that along with the trick and, trick and treat on the trail, no, trick and treat on the track. I get it right. I appreciate the information, the bonds. Yeah, I talked with some folks, had a long conversation with one of our longtime residents last week, and questions, you know, the public safety bond is pretty cut and dry, the stormwater and some projects already planned, and maybe also looking at some of our pipes 30 inches and under that were not done in the initial study. I think people are excited about the parks bonds. We just, they're being phased, we just don't know what's gonna be phased at Meadowbrook yet. And of course, a lot of questions about the street projects other than Joan Sausage Road. And I think there's several we've talked about, we'll have to consult with DOT, is there some way to help make smoother flow on Highway 50? Is there possibly making some improvements along White Oak Road, maybe the intersection of Andor Springs and Old Stage Road, who knows? We don't know till we consult with them what may or may not be allowed, and then gone with some other safety projects. And then, of course, the infrastructure on the bus transit, so I think that's certainly important, those are the questions that were asked last week in a, in a forum we had in regards to, uh, rapid, uh, the rapid bus, RBT, let me get it right. Yes, BRT, I get it wrong every time, Bus Rapid Transit, thank you. And I know that the, the, what they're talking about coming here is not the initial one, I think the initial one where I was working on was down New Bern Avenue, and I think they've secured federal funding and are in the process of doing that, but this one, of course, is being planned and what changes may happen at that time. So I just encourage people to, to get informed and watch, look at what was done with the 2013 bond, you know, the, the town hall, the police department, the rec center, the numerous sidewalks we've added, transportation improvements along Highway 70, look at New Rand Road and Highway 70 and Garner Road, numerous improvements that have been made. As far as prioritizing sidewalks, I think all of us have thoughts, but the council will have to get together at, at a time, but I think we all agree, we want to get sidewalks in neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks and connect missing links to sidewalks and maybe newer subdivisions or older subdivisions that can get to the sidewalk network. The sidewalk network is, if you get out of Timber Drive, you can go to Raleigh, you can go to White Oak, you can get on, hopefully we'll get one on New Rand Road one day where you could walk from Timber Drive and walk all the way across to downtown and stay on the sidewalk. I mean, that's, that's the plan one day. It just takes time, and, and as people say, well, why haven't we done this before? It's like, well, it's because it costs a lot of money. I mean, we could take the old $69 million of here and plant sidewalks and fill a lot of the gaps in town, we still wouldn't hit them all. So there are some priorities there, and of course, one that was talked in the last bond that was not completed was the greenway slash sidewalks down the Buffalo Road area, and hopefully one day linking up with the Wake County City of Raleigh Greenway that goes over to Lake Wheeler. I reckon it'll go along Swift Creek also, I'm, I'm making that assumption, is that correct?
There's two options, one to go to Lake Wheeler and then another option to go up to Yates Mill, and so both of those are being explored, but, but both of those connections are desired.
They are supposed to go along, I'm assuming, the Swift Creek area, is that correct? Because of the...
Yes, Swift Creek area, and the tributary of Swift Creek that goes to Yates Mill.
Right, okay. So I just encourage people to, like, consider, consider getting informed on these bonds and consider supporting them, again, with our revenue savings program in place. We have a program in place to help pay for, basically, we help pay for the bonds, but we have to remember that, you have to hire new staff to operate new parks, you have to have new staff to help design and run this bond program if it passes, with our new, new folks in engineering, and there'll be inspections and in budget, our budget team, so that's, that's part of it also, so. And when the, if the bonds pass and the fire station's built, you're gonna have to hire 10 to 12 new firefighters, and it'll exceed a million dollars, so that will cause a tax increase also. So the O and M are parts of what the tax increase will be, so please consider supporting the bonds.
Singleton, one follow-up if I may on Bus Rapid Transit, just to make sure that everyone's aware, while the, you're right, the New Bern Avenue will be funded first and has received some federal funding, the southern BRT connector that will come to Garner has reached a federal milestone that it has been accepted as a federal project. So while funding is not guaranteed, it at least lets the clock start ticking for cost for development of that project to be considered for future funding. So it's not guaranteed funding, but it's a pretty important milestone, so we're pretty pleased that that southern leg that will come down Wilmington, use a realigned new Wilmington extension and come into Garner at North South Station has passed that additional federal milestone.
Not only will it bring bus traffic transit to Garner, it'll bring new development around it because of where it's gonna be going, there'll be lots of development around that, around that proposed bus rapid transit lane, so. And of course, in the bond, there's also $750,000 to make improvements in the Garner Bus Route with covered, covered bus stops and so forth. We're gonna have bus stops and have people that are protected by, by the weather. And it's interesting driving, another day I was going down Garner Road and it's like, passed like four different bus stops, and there was at least one person at every one of them when they go there. And of course, where our office is off Pool Drive, they, they use the buses are side by side, they come at the top of the hour going both ways, and there's almost always one or two people at either one of the stops. So anyway, just please consider supporting the bonds. Thank you, I'll be quiet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton, that's fine. Ms. Behringer, I'll go to you next.
Okay, well, what Mr. Singleton said, I think he covered it all. I've had several inquiries too about the, the bond questions, and that is always very good. When people don't inquire, then you, you get nervous because they're really not paying attention, and I'm finding that I'm hearing a lot, and it's nice to be able to respond to those questions and give people information they're asking for. I'm gonna add to Mr. Singleton's note that you can start at White Oak and go, I believe, to downtown Raleigh on Timber Drive, you can actually go all the way to Virginia. The names, the road name changes several times, but the road is actually the same road going all the way to Virginia from White Oak, so.
On the sidewalk?
No, not on the sidewalk, driving, driving.
I'm just joking.
But hey, it keeps you from getting lost, and that's all I have, sir.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir, it kind of chimes in on what Mr. Singleton's saying, everybody I meet, whether it's outside or at the grocery store, or at the parks, and tell me about the bonds, do I need to vote for the bonds? And it's, you know, we've talked about it and, and with the brochures, and I think we've educated ourselves, and it's a simple answer, yes, we need it, and when you get to vote and you go online, you can see exactly what your tax dollars are going for. And for the most part, I've, I've not had any negative comments at all, everybody's quite excited about it. They sense that we're, we're excited, and I said, because, you know, it, it's incumbent on us, the city councilman, to help get that word out there and, and ensure that, that once they are approved, that those tax dollars will be spent wisely. And, but so many people moving in, they're, they're excited about it, so I think I'm encouraging everybody to vote and support those bonds, and let's make it overwhelming. And I think we'll see some great results in the coming years for all of it, and you'll see your tax dollars at work. And that's all I got, sir.
Thank you, Phil, well stated, sure enough. Mr. Dellinger?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Microphone. First, I just want to remind everybody that there's a Night Market this Friday, from five to nine. And with that, I'm just really, really proud of our Downtown Garner Association Board and Maureen, all the work that we've done in the past year coming out of COVID and transitioning from food trucks, and there's so many exciting things are going on down there now, and it's really coming alive, and, and the rec center's really helped also anchor a lot of that activity. So it's, it's good to see downtown transforming quickly and people knowing that we have it downtown, like, finally, some people still don't know, but we're working on it. DGA will be investing in lighting up downtown again this year. Last year, we did the tree, the building tops. This year, we're gonna do the depot and the caboose, and I think also we're working with the town to light up the rec center as well, so we'll have more lights than we did last year and in time for the holidays, so that's really exciting. As we speak, there is probably an artist putting up a mural in downtown. It was yesterday, WRL came out, I think WTVD came out. Did it, did everyone see the clip that WRL ran? If you didn't, I mean, everybody should see it, it was short and to the point. I think the only issue had with it, it was called a, a black history mural, and it's really, it's a Garner history mural featuring African-American influences and community leaders, so, but it was a great video. The police, interim police chief came out, the captain came out, did some priming. It was, it was exciting. So she'll be painting through the next week or so, so during the Night Market, there'll be people wandering around, hopefully be able to see her painting or at least see it kind of in mid-construction there. But it's a, it, we were out there a little bit earlier, and the colors are starting to creep in and pop out, so it's really exciting. Also, as Mr. Hodges mentioned, DGA is doing a, it's a meeting on the 21st at GPAC. Everyone come out, if you're in North Garner, anywhere north of Garner, anywhere, just come out and get an update on the bonds and also just kind of get an update on everything going on downtown. Two other things, one is, I know we had previously spoken about an LGBTQ ordinance and looked at what the other municipalities were gonna do. I do understand that, I haven't read the ordinance that Wake County passed yesterday, but I know they did pass one, and I also know that Raleigh was considering it tonight, so I don't know what the result of that is, but I think we need to really put on our radar an ordinance of our own and not be sort of the hole in the county where people think they might be able to, uh, not be good community members. So I think that'd be something we could look at, the results of those ordinances for the council to consider at a later date. The other, shall I begin with the topic of the day?
Yeah, I think you could.
Just briefly?
Yeah.
Okay. Over the past week or so, there's been a lot of feedback from citizens on the, the parade and the town's decision to not hold one because of staffing issues, and so worked with some citizens in the community who formed a committee to look at this, and over the past week, we've reached out to the town and Fire Department and the Police Department to see the feasibility of doing it, and so we're in the works right now. We're planning a community-led parade that will probably be smaller than the traditional Garner Parade, but it'll be a parade for December 19th. There are more, more information to come, there's a website, garnerchristmasparade.com, people can sign up to get updates for that. There are already a couple dozen confirmed entrants, and we're continuing to reach out on an invite basis based on folks who are Garner-focused, kid-focused, and have been in previous parades to flesh that out a little bit, so there'll be more information to come, but just very appreciative for the citizens to step up, and appreciative for the town to be open, and council and the mayor as well, to helping assist on the logistics of, of that endeavor, Mr.?
Confirm the date, you said?
December 18th.
Okay.
Yep.
You said 19?
Did I say 19? That's my birthday, so, sorry.
Yeah, so Saturday, Saturday, December 18th.
19th is my birthday, so that's probably why I said it. So we're excited about that, and just, again, appreciative of the, the town and, and the council and mayor for getting behind citizens who are trying to keep Christmas going. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Attorney, I, I sort of forgot you, but I didn't, so I'm going to you in just a minute. I, I just want to mention a couple of things as a mayor, so, um, I wanted to acknowledge that our town manager and your mayor had an opportunity to go over and participate in a Habitat Build Project that was recognizing elected officials around Wake County. There were a number of folks represented from other towns, and Rodney and I spent about, I guess, a good three hours over there at the, a site, I call it the Edge of Cary or in Cary, where a building was underway, and so we all got a chance to sling a hammer and do other things and put up some walls. to sling a hammer and do other things, and put up some walls and a variety of things. And there was a pretty good turnout, I think. So I was proud that our town could be represented there. Speaking of representation, I think all the council members are aware of the recent death of Mayor Eagles, who was former mayor of Roseville. His service was held on Sunday and had the privilege of going over there. And again, representing us there, his, his widow, whom I had met, I think on one occasion, was very appreciative of the, the encouragement and support the family had gotten. Also, the tragic, tragic death of the police officer in our, one of our neighboring towns in Knightdale, all of you are aware of that, had a chance again to speak to the mayor over there and send condolences on behalf of our town to them. If you watch the news, you, you understand there's a service a little bit later on this week. I think it was announced this afternoon maybe. But so be aware of that as well. I did have an inquiry or two about Halloween, and I, in terms of the date it's to be celebrated, and, and conferring with the town manager and others is my understanding that the town doesn't try to change the date from the fact that it's on the calendar on October 31. And so that's, that's as far as the town is concerned, would be the date of Halloween, even though it's on a Sunday. But I guess some places may celebrate it on a different day. But it's October 30, 31, as far as we're concerned. I want to thank council members for their participation in these bond presentations. I've heard good reports from those. I'm proud and pleased with the work that you're doing. And the mayor's had an opportunity to participate in some of those as well. And certainly our town staff who can't advocate, but they can educate, and they've done a good job of doing that, I think. So keep up the good work. We're not to the finish line yet, but I think, I think there's a, there's a good bit of information out there, and hopefully people are, if they don't know, they're asking questions. And so I encourage them to continue to do that. Okay. With that, Ms. Jones, did you have reports you wanted to share with the council?
No, we'll just cover it in closed session.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else from the council at this time before we ask for a motion to go into closed session? Anybody? Okay. You see the general site there. So I need a motion for us to go into closed session at this time. Was there?
Adding real estate?
Yeah. So we'll also need to add a closed session for real estate, which is subsection A5.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to N.C. General Stat Sheets 143318-11A3 to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation and subset 11A, A5 to consult with potential land acquisition.
Okay. Motion properly made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, seconded the motion. All right, council, if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes, and I declare that we will now move into closed session.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Declare that we're back in open session. The council went into closed session for basically two purposes. One was to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation. And the other item had to do with discussion of real estate matters. We received a report from staff. And the council took no formal action on these matters. Okay. I believe that covers everything. Certainly on the agenda, I would Certainly on the agenda, I would remind my council members that all of you have a little assignment that I'd like to get your results from as soon as possible. We need to move on that. Some of you have been able to complete that. So see me afterwards if you have any concerns or questions on that, if you will. So if there's nothing else at this time, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn this particular session.
I mentioned one thing I should have mentioned when I was talking, commenting about the bonds, to thank staff for their work on these presentations. Thank communications team for the brochures, the signs, the videos they produced, all the presentations that have been made. I should have said that. I thought of that afterwards and I sat here and thought, gosh, you forgot to thank staff. So I appreciate y'all's time and work and effort into all this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. England. Well stated. Okay. All right. Is there a motion we adjourn?
Send it.
Okay. Motion made and segmented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.